Ron is here to kind of give a big picture, so to speak, and answer any questions.
So I'm Ron Smith, principal with RHR Smith and Company. And we do two thirds of all the municipalities in the entire state of Maine. I believe we do the same for all the school systems in the state of Maine, all but two or three counties. So we know a lot about government. And so we've had a relationship with Bucksport. As Jacob said, you know, given some of the transition that you're at, you know, moving from Sioux into Jacob, that'd be just a good idea, you know, just to come and hit some of the highlights. Where you at? Me giving you guys some advice, you know, and doing this for thirty five years. And, you know, and really just, you know, answering any questions you all may have. And I'd probably start out by saying this, you know, and I can say this, because I think we do almost every mill town in the entire state of Maine. You know, you guys put yourself in a great position, you know, when the mill was here, you know, to kind of set yourself up for the withdrawal plan. And I'm going back to the Roger Raymond, you know, era, you know. But certainly, you know, I don't think people realize the significance of a major taxpayer, what it can do, especially when you don't have that opportunity, you know, anymore. You know, but Bucksport was obviously in a great financial position, you know, once upon a time ago, put itself in a good position, for lack of a better way to say it, weather the storm, you know. And the storms come, storms gone, and you're still here, and you've still got some good financial condition. The, like, I can see some of the audits in front of you. And I'd probably start the story going back three years. And say since COVID, at post-COVID, you know, so two thousand twenty one. You guys would average somewhere between ninety to a hundred, hundred days of your operating budget in reserve. Typically, that's where you want to be. That's the top shelf. Usually ninety days is the benchmark, you know, our standards say. To the lower end of that is thirty days. And you guys have twenty four in front of you. You're gonna look and you're gonna see that you've got about sixty days of fund balance on that report that you have. But I came here to talk about kind of where you are today. We've looked into the crystal ball, Jacob and I and Rachel, you know, to where you're at, like physically here today. We were knee deep in the twenty five audit. So not only can I talk about and kind of say where we started this year, I can tell you about where you ended this year, too. You know, and I think that that's probably even more important than information about a year ago. So simply said, back when you started this audit that you had in front of you, you guys, as I said, had about ninety days of fund balance in front of you. What's that representative of? About three and a half million dollars. And you'll see that in that document. When you end this year, six thirty twenty five, and you have that report in front of you this year, you've made a calculated spend down to about thirty days of that fund balance now. And a lot of that's been willfully spent over three years, keeping that tax rate stable. You know, you guys have used over two million dollars. I think it's eight, six and six, you know, respectively, with the year that just ended with six hundred in that year, two million dollars, you know. And Jacob says, you know, one of the big things here that really caused kind of that cliff in that budget was the fact that you didn't have that money that you had because you've been using it for the past three years. So that really is probably the biggest significant financial change, you know, that I would say that you guys have encountered. You got a lot to show for it. You put it into infrastructure. You helped the people out in Bucksport for the past three years, keeping that mill rate stab, uh, stable. And you just weren't in that position this year to do that, you know. So I understand for the twenty six budget, you didn't use any surplus, you know, to do that. You did, yeah, otherwise it would have compromised even thirty days of your fund balance. But you're right, really kind of on the bottom of that threshold. And as Jacob and I have been talking about, really, I think that that's gonna be kind of the conversation for twenty six, this budget that you're in now, and twenty seven next year. How do you get back to where you were three years ago? You're not getting there this year. You're not probably getting there next year. I told Jacob, probably a two-year plan, you know, to, you know, to do that. You know, and I think you started that this year. And as Jacob just said, that million dollars, he says one point four because of some other things there, you know, with some other reserve accounts. Like I say, there was a willful plan, then a spend down of that money. But you're at probably the bottom of the threshold, which is where our standards say you should be, where we want to see you to be. And what we'd like to do is really kind of press a hard reset, you know, on the town. You guys have really started that with this twenty six budget. Going forward, you've got some reserve accounts there that I think probably ought to all roll into that fund balance. You've got some capital reserve accounts. You've got some special reserve accounts. You've got a bunch of grants coming through you, the town. You've got that retaining wall that you've made a significant investment to. So kind of like looking at that individually through this audit for six thirty twenty five. I think you've got some reserve accounts that have been active for a few years. And your charter says, like, three years, reset it, you know. And that's where we're at here right now, is really just kind of taking a look in the mirror, you know, what we have. And I think that probably the biggest thing that's gonna come out of this June thirty twenty five audit is us in December bringing that product to you for June thirty twenty five and recommending a fund balance policy where we say, here's what your minimum is, and I think you're there right now. And here's what your threshold should be, sixty days, getting back there, okay? I'm not sure you're gonna get there on June thirty twenty six, but I think you'll be close. I think you'll be there on June thirty twenty seven. Question is, what happens over sixty days? What happens when you have that much money? Do you use any for tax relief? Do you put any back into your capital reserve accounts that you've been spending down, you know, on infrastructure? And the answer is yes, you know, to all of those, all of those. And you've got a five-year capital plan? I'd probably revisit that for sure, you know, if I was the town of Bucksport. But kind of the message is, I think, through June thirty twenty five, while you still got that, that, that fund balance, hitting a reset, reloading, you know, really coming up with, you know, some re-editing of your current plan and your current reserves and what they look at. They're all in there. Some of those have been spent in two thousand twenty five. Like I said, I'm pretty, we're up to date right now with where you are, where we think you're gonna end this year, June thirty twenty five. And I think now's the time to kind of look at the reserves, identify capital. There's a big need. You'd clearly got some other special reserves for, you know, for various ordinances and some other things that I'm sure were adopted at town through town meeting, charter. Those can't go away. So, so we keep those, but there's some that have been inactive for a long time. You've got some money sitting in places, you know, clearly, that I think probably should be looked at and re-appropriated, is the best way I can say it, according to your charter. You got that retaining wall that's five hundred thousand dollars sideways on your financial statements because the DOT is gonna be sending you your money this year. Probably some things that you could do. And one of the things that I said to Jacob is, I'd really consider exercising one of those, section nine in your charter about borrowing that three hundred thousand dollars, you know, and spreading that out over maybe five years. I think that would give you some time. I always say, if you're gonna make long-term investments into infrastructure, consider borrowing. You typically do. The big thing that you have now left on your general fund, I think it was some road project construction that you did. You got some sewer debt, you know, that's paid for by the sewer. Other than that, there's really not a lot of debt. A lot of that debt's fallen off over the next couple of years, you know. So, so now's the time to kind of you use that. And, and what happens when you did a lot of these projects? And when you spend down that fund balance for tax relief, two million dollars plus in the past few years? So you go back to that audit right there, where our fund balance is down sixty days. So what's that do? That really hurts your cash flow. It really does. You made a calculated spend down of your cash flow, too. And that hence the tax anticipation note, you know, that you have. You know, so I think that's probably working with Jacob, coming up with a plan, really kind of putting that twenty five product in front of you that sets the baseline for you. And then saying, hey, okay, here we are. Here's what you got today as a six thirty twenty five. Where do you want to go? Okay, do you need this reserve anymore? Okay, do you, do you want to put, maybe you need more roads, okay? There's a lot of money in infrastructure coming down in roads. I suggest that would be a good one, you know, to consider, you know, doing out there. So, so just things like that. You know, the numbers don't lie, you know. And like I say, you had the money. You made some choices with it. One of the choices was to help the taxpayers for the past two years, you know, in Bucksport. And that came at a price. But now, I don't think you can afford to do that over the next couple of years. I think you gotta get back, you know, to where you were two years ago, so.
First off, I disagree with, we made the decision about where some of this money went because the voters of this town, some of them are sitting here in this room. The big ticket items, they came before the voters and they said yes. And there was a sense of complacency that was there. They voted yes to go forward with these walls, okay, that cost us hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. They made the decision for the village partnership, which is a ten million dollar project. And they're already starting on the, on the street here. The surveyors are out here. It's coming, okay? And that overall cost is, is ten million dollars. There's a, a local share that's gonna be one million dollars. I mean, I've got the two bullets you just rattled off here, two-year plans. You know, we gotta get the fund balance up to sixty days instead of thirty and visit our five-year capital plan. But the voters and their complacency put us in this position. That's the way I feel, sitting here right now. We've got to come up with another million dollars for this village partnership plan.
And my thoughts are, you don't have that money anymore without really compromising.
We're gonna have to borrow it.
Exactly, and that's my whole point.
Okay, we're broke. There's no way else to put it.
And rates, good news is, well, at least I can say this, good news is, I hope the rates are coming down, you know, as I understand that they are and continue, will be, and especially into infrastructure projects. I don't think you're gonna have a choice but to borrow, you know. And I'm here to deliver that message to you loud and clear, for sure.
I have one last question to interrupt you. But with some of this stuff that we're looking ahead of us, can any, is, is there a practice, a financial practice that we can put in place that would pause? The voters have come along and said they want this ten million dollar because ninety percent, ten percent on the town. And it's started now, but is there any financial way we can put a pause on that to, for a year or two years to?
So the answer would be yes, especially with math, you know, as the identification comes, comes before you, you know. Certainly with math, I've seen that happen many times in my thirty five years. Typically with, you know, whether or not it be for industrial parks or for new town offices or downtown renovations and improvements. But, but I'm still a little unclear about this ten million dollar project. I don't know. When you say the voters say that they want it, have they like said, hey, we want, we want to do this project? Go borrow nine million dollars and we'll figure out how we're gonna come up with the other million? I just don't know enough about the logistics of it.
No, we don't. The split is, the feds pay eight, the state pays one, and we pay one.
Gotcha. So the question's gonna be, is how are you gonna come up with your million dollars?
Right. And I think Rich can speak a little bit to this. Was twenty twenty nine a realistic timeframe? Is that the timeframe we're looking at?
When it was sent to the voters, it was sent that we were going to borrow the money for that one million dollars. That's how the ballot question was, was read.
Right.
But, no, so they're finishing up now with the surveying. We should have a report by twenty twenty six. The money is coming from Senator, we approached Senator King and Senator Collins for the issues, so we'll have the answer in twenty seven.
And so do the work in twenty eight, is that likely?
Twenty seven, twenty eight, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna assume the worst condition on those earmarks still coming through because I've seen two fire barns get nixed to answer that question, too, in the past year because the earmarks didn't come through. So, so, and I think I still hear that this project's predicated on those earmarks coming through. And let me just tell you, any earmark right now that, that was on the table, I'm not sure there's an earmark that's still on the table. I've seen a lot of stuff being threatened, especially in school systems, you know. So the people would like this project done, but they wanted this project done, ten million dollars, under the understanding that nine million was coming from outside the town. So that changes everything. So like I say, I've seen two fire barns, you know, at about one at about two and a half million dollars, one at about four and a half million dollars, lose or have their congressional earmarks cut. Those fire barns stopped right in their tracks right now as we speak. So, so you've got a few years. We'll see what happens to the earmarks. There's a lot of people not named Bucksport out there waiting and in a similar position. I can attest to that right now about some of their future projects right now that are hitting in a holding pattern right now. You got a lot of planes circling, you know, their towns. Why? Because the funding hasn't landed. So clearly, you know, if I'm a voter in the town and I was under the impression we were going to have this project at ten million dollars and nine of it, ninety percent of it was funded outside Bucksport taxpayer dollars, you know, with ten percent, the other ten percent coming from borrowing. If I found out next year, the year after, that that's not ten, ten percent Bucksport anymore, it's fifty percent, sixty, seventy or nothing? Yeah, you've changed the whole playing field, for sure. Because why? Because your, your, your funding, your proposal now has blown up. And I've seen a lot of proposals, and I'm working with a lot of proposals that have blown up right now because the earmarks aren't there or suspended and delayed. So, so that would be no different, Paul, here in this case, no different, you know. So, so, yeah. And, and I just heard a detail here that they were gonna borrow the money. That's good because I think that that is something you'd have to do anyway. So, and in a couple of years, I fully suspect those rates are probably gonna be where they were two years ago, so.
What else you have for us?
Well, we'll wait till the end for public comment or?
Okay. Well, I was gonna ask the question, what is, what are we talking about? The year you're just surveying for what?
Downtown Main Street project.
Why?
That one that was voted on.
Uh, was it last year or the year before?
Year, yeah, two years ago.
Two years ago.
To redo all of Main Street. It's gonna sit out at the bridge and it's gonna go to the old mill. They're already surveying right now.
And that's why I think, you know, however you move forward, move forward with a plan, you know, move forward with a, with a budget, you know, and move forward with financing because right now, that's still up in the air. And I think that I would take a hard pause on a ten million dollar project, for sure.
I mean, I think the voters passed it because of the split.
Sure, absolutely. Things change, right?
If it went over the million, that's a whole different.
It would be a different conversation here.
So just other things there. I think that was your question, Marina? You know, that, you got a lot of money invested in the infrastructure. There's not a lot of operating capital there when you look at it. You're, you're heavy, you're heavy, you're heavy in capital equity. You're not heavy in operational equity. I know that there's been some movement in rates, you know, from what we do. We do a lot of oceanfront marinas and, you know, things like that. Probably ought to take a look. I'm not sure there's a lot of people with boat slips out there gonna hate to hear this, but time to probably take a hard look at that one, too, for sure. No doubt about it, no doubt. Just other things in the other retaining wall was certainly a conversation piece. And one of the things, as I told Jacob, is I would be in a heartbeat right now as that thing comes to an end. And once you settle up with the Department of Transportation, you know, I'd consider probably borrowing against that retaining wall because clearly you used your money to finance that, so, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't want to interrupt your presentation at all when you're done.
I'm here for you. You keep, you can let them rip. I'm here, it's like I say, if you've got something you want to step in and I hit a subject or?
So in the past, general maneuvering, we took a lot of money out of capital improvement for different departments. And we rolled things over into operating expenses for something that we did. For example, for, we moved our cruisers for the police departments that have spending the money and buying them, owning them. We put them into operating and we started leasing them. We've done the same thing with other trucks and other equipment, so on and so forth. On that side of things, our capital expenditures are down because of that, but our operating expenses are up. How do you feel our operating expenses line up based on population with other populations throughout the state?
I need to probably take a hard look at that if you're trying to compare, you know, like Bucksport to another community. I always say that's a terrible idea, you know. But as far as like debt and things like, why? You know, because everybody's different. Thirty five years of me just saying, you know, just saying that. Some, you take care of your roads, the next community doesn't, you know. I don't, many reasons, you know, I could cite for that. But as far as that, I think that there could be some other comparisons done. And I think probably, Steve, the real talking point now is, you used a lot of those reserves to, to, to pay for what they were intended for. And that's what I meant, take a hard look at that reset. And maybe it's time to shift, you know, the responsibility of how you're paying those debt payments, those lease payments and all that. If they're coming out of operations, maybe they come out of reserves. Don't know. But we actually talked about that a lot today, you know, about really kind of cause and effect. And that's why I say, look at all your reserves because some of them have been inactive for a couple of years, okay? So, so if you're heavy into public safety and you're leasing cruisers or whatever it is, well, well, if you're not using a hundred and ten thousand bucks sitting in some other equipment reserve for recreation, maybe you, maybe you shift that money over to where it is you're using. That's what I mean, that hard reset. You know, I think we'll bring you some math to that. And that'll give me a chance to answer your question for six thirty twenty five.
But do you, do you, do you shudder when you hear the word leasing? Does it?
No, I don't shudder at all.
Because there are, there are other municipalities close by that are leasing dump trucks. We're gonna be coming up on needing some fire equipment, that you can lease ambulances and?
I don't shudder at all as long as there's a non-appropriation clause, meaning if it doesn't get funded at town meeting, that lease and that equipment goes away.
But it's just getting?
Yeah, just make sure you got the right language in it.
Payment schedule.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I'm more interested, what are you leasing and who's paying for it? Who's paying for it? Where's it coming from? You know, and if you shift the burden from capital to operations, you know, I'm not sure that was equitable and I would just want to look at the math, you know, on that. You know, and if there's other, other, for lack of a better way to say it, reserves, you know, that exist out there that aren't, aren't being utilized or, or shelved, you know, for lack of a better word. Because why? You don't have a plan yet, okay? Maybe it's time to re-appropriate that money somewhere else where it's needed until you do have a plan, revisit your plan. That change ought, that plan ought to change every three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And if it doesn't, that's a bad plan. That's a bad plan. Too much things can happen in the world of government now, especially for oceanfront communities. So, too, too much things.
Elaborate on that, especially for oceanfront.
Well, you've got a sewer. You're walking around, I'll give you a perfect case in point, wastewater. That's an expensive phone call if something goes on with it. Our marina gets wiped out, okay? Yeah, we run two hundred thousand dollars-ish, you know, through our marina there. Well, guess what? Mother Nature comes. I've seen four marinas get wiped out in the past two years. And one of them had a price tag of about eleven million dollars. Where's that money gonna come from? So, just things like that. When you run that kind of a business, a big lake, 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 lakefront resort type community. So, so it's different. And that's why I say, don't compare yourself to, you know, to, to somebody else. You're Bucksport, you know, what's going on here? You know, what do we need? You know, where, where are we deficient? Roads is always the big one. That's the big one that I've been talking about, roads. Roads is a big one. So, so I'd argue, you'll never have enough road, road money. But there's a lot of money out there that's kind of sitting idle, you know, because of all the freezes of all these earmarks that exist out there. That Build Back America package passed in November of two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-one now, okay? We have two point five billion dollars in the state. We still got a lot of money in the state. Not until, not until some things get figured out with this administration. You know, we're just starting to see some of that money get released again. And it's usually the bond bank now that's releasing it or, you know, the clean water, you know, the drinking app. But when you're on an oceanfront community, price tags always go up. They always go.
Question related to your confidence that we'll get to the sixty-day fund balance.
More than confidence.
What is your, what's driving your confidence in that?
Me, me and me for thirty-five years and going to this rodeo all the time, all the time. So, yeah. This is, this is, this is an easy fix to get there. You've already started it. You didn't use any surplus. You one point five, you made some hard decisions this year. One point five million, four million dollars-ish, you know, of revenues that didn't surface in your two thousand twenty-six budget. There's my confidence level right there. I'm already going up exponentially, so that's huge.
Budget season, for sure.
Which I guarantee it was. It's probably tough when the people got their tax bills. And, and what I would just say to you and to the people in Bucksport, you've kept that tax rate artificially low using two million dollars for the past three years. So, two million dollars, that's probably four mills, three years.
I was gonna ask you, can you kind of transfer that to the mill rate?
We did, I'd say it's about, I'd say it's probably closer to four because we're going back two and three years ago, two and three budgets ago.
So maybe, okay.
It's about, what, six hundred grand a mill?
Yeah.
It was back then.
Yeah, so that's why I say.
That's an interesting way to look at it.
Listen, thirty-five years, and I said, this is an easy fix for Bucksport. I, I discipline. And that's why I say, reset. Look at what you got. You still got money. Look at it, you know? So, and, and, and like I say, I think that these, these projects that you have, you know, here, you know, right now, financing isn't a bad option. It's just not. It creates opportunities. And typically, you've made choices to pay for money, whatever the public wants or doesn't want. You've made choices for what they want, typically, out of your back pocket for the past two or three years, okay? That kept the mill rate down. You can't afford to do that anymore, so it's not sustainable. It's not sustainable because you used two million dollars in three years.
Are we still legally bound at five percent is the only overage that we can appropriately budget for statewide?
You're talking about overlay, correct? Yeah, that's a state, that's a state law.
Yeah, but, but we're still at five percent, I should know that.
Yeah, that, so the answer is yes, but that's not a Bucksport thing, that's a state.
Yeah, absolutely.
How many years do we have left on paying for our roads?
Two? I would have said three to four. I thought it was two thousand twenty-eight or twenty-nine. I actually looked at your whole deck. Well, listen, stand by, I'll tell you, I'll give you an official answer right now.
Okay, what page do you want?
I am gonna flip to page. You're talking about your roads?
Yeah.
I'm gonna flip, so I was right, page thirty-nine. And that will be paid off in two thousand twenty-nine. And you've got a lot of things coming off the books, too, over the next two or three years. Smaller, but still, probably eight, eight hundred to a million dollars. Eight hundred thousand to a million dollars.
I was just wondering if you could elaborate on the, you talked about the marina being a kind of a liability. It's not a big moneymaker. And there's a lot of risk as far as if something happens, it can get destroyed easily. We've put a lot of infrastructure money into it to get it back up to a hundred percent. This is something you'd recommend leasing out to a private company or selling to a private company or what do you think? How do other towns do it?
Well, here's what I'm sure of. Other towns don't lease to other private companies for many reasons, you know. And usually it's because of the owners and they'll go privatizing. You know, it usually never ends well. You've got a oceanfront community to your north that said, our marina will never be self-sufficient, you know, is the best way I can say it. We're gonna have to put a lot of money into the marina. What they do, they roll it into the department, into a department just like any other department of the town because the taxpayers were floating the bill. And at one point in time, when it got up to probably close to a million dollars, you know, of a deficit, you know, it was like, we, there is no way we're gonna be able to turn this around. There's no way we're gonna be able to pass the cost there. You know, we're gonna look for other options, bringing, you know, chatters, bringing cruise ships into our, into our port, things like that to subsidize, you know, the marina. But they bought it in under recreation and they bought it in another town department to pay for it. Why? Why? Because there was no path to self-sustaining that marina. And, uh, that was it. And, and actually, when they were negotiating the insurance company with Maine Municipal Association, Maine Municipal Association said, this thing is not self-sufficient too as well. Your rates aren't going to get any cheaper. You've had four major claims in the past three years, you know? So, so it, there, there, there was a lot of factors, you know, that weighed into the decision. And that's why I say, I don't ever, just like, like, if somebody said, oceanfront community, marina, hey, self-sustaining? No way. To me, it's like the equivalent of an ambulance department, wastewater department, things like that. A necessary service, a necessary, um, addition to who you are in your community, but not very, not, not to the point where somebody's gonna convince me that they're cost-effective. I have yet to see a marina that I would say, there's something that you can go make a lot of money out in the world of government. They just don't exist out there for many reasons, many reasons.
Basically, if they break even, that's a win.
It's a huge win, huge win. And it's a huge win for the community too, cuz what it does.
Far from breaking even.
You are far from breaking. And like I said, you invest, and that's why you're sideways, cuz you have that big investment that you made into the marina, you know? And, and, and they're, the, 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 the financial mad and algorithms say, you ain't paying that back anytime soon. And that's exactly the point that I'm trying to make to you right now. So, it's one of the things I would pay attention. You know, certainly too. And rolling that in and considering, hey, you know what? If this thing's not gonna be able to sustain itself, you know, let, let, let's just face reality today. Let's roll it in as a department, you know, of the town. So, cuz clearly that's who's paying, who's gonna subsidize it.
Privatizing is a bad idea.
I think it's a terrible idea. That's just me being me, terrible idea.
What I wanted to hear.
Yeah. But you might not have a choice. If the people say, hey, we don't wanna pay for it. We don't, we don't, we don't like your budget. We don't wanna pay for that marina as part of your budget. So, you may not have a choice. You know, but I just, there are many other options before you privatize it. When you privatize it, you will lose control. So.
I mean, it feels like a town conversation on.
Huge.
On what, what, what we're gonna look like now, what we want now for services.
When I, I saw this marina that I'm talking about, typically when I walk into a room and it's gonna be a heated debate, it's usually about public safety, police department, fire department. I walked into the biggest room of people I've ever seen because of that marina. It was a hot topic. People, and they talked about privatizing. People didn't wanna lose that marina and they didn't care what it was gonna cost them. So.
Does, we're here tonight talking about the audit that you completed, but does, R H R Smith and Company, do you have, going forward, uh, this year, town manager is going to, we provide fire and EMS services to two neighboring towns. Does your company have financial algorithms that we could engage you with and the town manager to see where we are versus where we should be going?
Then we can give you other communities to compare it to, for sure. You know, then you can start talking about population per capita. You know, um, like how close your, your nearest, uh, fire support is and things like that, for sure, into local agreements. And so we can give you, uh, what'd you say, fire and what?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Five, I could probably send you thirty of those, you know, right now, so that you could probably get an understanding and probably more importantly, put you in touch with the communities.
That would be really helpful.
Ambulance is a big one right now. Regionalization, people are, they can't afford it anymore. I mean, ambulance is probably one of the worst government propositions of running a service. It is not a moneymaker. Anybody that tells you it is is lying, telling you right now. Me being me for thirty-five years, it is not a moneymaker. So.
Is ambulance making us money then or not?
Uh, well, you, based upon the runs, so, so let me just say, your ambulance, if it's breaking even, that's a good day. I'm just saying the same thing for the marina.
In the past, our ambulance has offset our cost of our personnel.
Yeah, it's cost, the personnel, that's a good day. Okay, that's a good day. But if runs are down and I, are you saying to me, is that a model for success for a business? No.
It is, it is on a municipal end though.
What, in a municipal end, it's a, it's, break even in municipal world's a good day. It's a good day. So, and that's why I say, when somebody says the word ambulance, the work that it takes for a good day is a lot of work.
But that's still the case with us now. We're still breaking even. We're still bringing in enough money to pay for.
So, 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 so a couple of things. So, let me look. I'll tell you exactly where I'm gonna look. I'm going to page. Two page, you guys got your product in front of you? I'm going to two pages. I don't have my glasses on, so bear with me.
I can't share.
What's that?
I can't share mine, sorry.
So I'm going to page eighty. I'm looking halfway down. So I'm looking clearly, 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 cuz Bucksport has subscriptions, right? To residents, judge of residents, anything? So ambulance, other revenues. I thought you had a subscription program. So, sorry. But if you look down, you got the user fees for ambulance and then you got the other revenues. So, you generated last year in those two areas, seven hundred and thirty, and my glasses are failing me, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred, a little north, a little north of seven hundred thousand. Everybody see where I'm getting that money? Ever, that math? That'll go to. Page. Be with me. Ah, well, it's gonna be hard to break it out here, but we can get you that answer pretty quickly. Eighty-one. So you got EMS protection in with fire. So somewhere in there, my, my seven hundred thousand dollars. We're hoping there's no more than seven hundred thousand dollars of expenses in there now. So, and then my next question's gonna be, you got insurance in there? You got benefits? You got other insurances elsewhere? You factor an overhead, you know, into rescue as well, and that would just be follow-up questions I would have to get to your question. Some people just put the cost of the ambulance, the personnel, the ambulance itself, maybe debt service, if you get a new ambulance, you know? But they don't factor in insurances, overhead, you know, and other things.
Well, it gets down into the weeds. It's the cost of supplies on that ambulance.
Exactly. Who's paying for that?
Of our paramedics and.
Fire paying for that for ambulance, ambulance paying it for a fire. And like I say, it just tells me that there's probably some, 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 some cross pollination.
Can you, um, get the information for ambulance? Could you also do the same for public safety, like, uh, police, police as well? Helpful to sort of see where we are in comparison to same population.
True. Yeah, and again, don't compare it to population. Yeah, except I'm gonna tell you, compare it to, you got any other police departments around you that you got a local agreement with the municipality and then we're getting into the real conversation. If you've got the only police department in other towns and you perhaps are providing them support, you know, as well, and maybe have contracts with other towns, that changes the whole conversation. Yeah, I just walked into a buzzsaw, you know, about two months ago at town meeting and I will never forget that. That was an interesting one. It was all about police department and our cost of police departments to other things. And I wish I would've got a little bit more briefed, you know, on the conversation at town meeting. Because people were talking about, for lack of a better word, apples and oranges. They weren't talking about apples and apples. So. And they were trying to get rid of that police department. So, and that, and they almost did. They almost did. So. There's a lot of conversation and a lot of bad math, a lot of bad math, a lot of bad comparison. I'm like, how can you do that? How can you compare that? You know, that's, I don't live in this town and that's, that's bad math. So.
Tell me, in this book, make sure I looked at it right. Make sure I had the right page. Tell me where we're at right now for actual liquid cash reserves.
Listen, so a couple of places. So you wanna look on page. And, and again, we just updated that as of today.
Yep.
But if you were to look on, page sixteen's the big one.
Yep.
Okay, you'll see it. There's all your cash. You'll see your retaining wall and some, you know, some, some, some other math, the marina that I was talking about there, that's, that, that's got all the equity sideways. It's part of that number in brackets of seven hundred thousand bucks. So on page sixteen is the big place, okay? And you'll see, you know, on page sixteen, everybody says, hey, our equity, do we have it? Is sitting, is it sitting in our checkbook? In Bucksport's case, no, it really isn't. Just because that investment you made into the retaining wall, the investment that you've had in the marina that you made that you haven't paid for yourself back, the money that you used to spend, spend down your surplus, and that's my whole point. If you looked on page sixteen and look at that second number up from the bottom, that two point two, the year before it was three point five. That's ninety days. And you had close to three million dollars sitting in that bank account first two lines. Not anymore. And, and that's because of the two million bucks you used to spend down for your tax rate.
Yep.
So, yeah, cause and effect.
Okay, good. I was hoping I was wrong on that one, but that's nice. Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out for, that I saw that.
I think you'll lighten your reserves too. That's why I take a hard look at that, for sure. All your capital. Take a hard look. That, that's where you really, 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 I think that's where the rubber's gonna meet the road over the next couple of years for you, for you and your guys, for this town. So, yeah. It's gonna be a long line waiting for some of this money that's supposed to be out there.
Yeah.
I just want you guys in the best position possible. So, and if somebody says, and this is just me, I got no dog in this fight, right? But you got a ten million dollar project, you know, I'm sure that there's been a lot of thought and effort to put in. I'm not trying to minimize that project. But if something happens tomorrow, okay, and money becomes available, and it's something of dire need for this town, I'm thinking a road, I'm thinking a culvert, I'm thinking of something of dire need that could really impact the level of service that you've got, okay? Are your priorities gonna change? Especially if you know the money's available? Of course they are. That's all I'm saying. If your plan can't change daily, that's a bad plan.
It's clear we have to take a hard look at our priorities moving forward.
Yeah, and I think that ten million dollar project would be at the top of the list. And I'm not, I'm not dismissing it. I'm just looking at the investment.
Probably agree with you.
Yeah, that is a big investment.
It's a different, it's very different than it was when they voted on it too. And I think.
And so are the times, so are the times. And, and, and again, I'm sure, like I say, would you have even voted on it if ninety cents on that dollar wasn't coming outside the town of Bucksport? So, would you even have voted?
That was the driver.
That was the driver.
So, these fire burns, they fire burns anymore their thoughts now because of the earmarks that are being held up.
Ron, you mentioned that the, um, essentially the first step in getting back to the sixty-day mark was eliminating, uh, any sort of revenue offsets from this budget. That was a good first step.
Great first step.
Very difficult, um, first step. Moving forward, what are some other things that we should keep on our radar that could?
I think looking at some of the, some of these financial investments that you guys made into infrastructure, you know, the possibility of going back and borrowing against them as opposed to using your own back pocket. We've talked about that. You know, I, I, I'd be, I'd be on the phone with your bank tomorrow. Bank, bank, I've been to that rodeo too. Banks will have no problem doing that. Just things like that to put the money back in your pocket until, until you can do what you're starting to do right now. Just rethink how you're doing business. So, that's it. So, you made a conscious choice to spend it down. Let's make a conscious choice to put some of it back for sure. And I think that that's gonna be even more disciplined for you guys over the next few years. So. Discipline, it really is. Keep it coming. I, 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 I really thoroughly enjoy these conversations. I really truly do.
You're making a really horrible conversation kind of fun.
Yeah, listen, I'm not sure I came here to make it even a horrible conversation. I just came here to say, be aware. And this is so, so, so easy to get back there, but I, I think that there's gotta be some rethinking, you know, your planning, for sure. I might even start with that project. So.
So, two months ago, our town manager at the time sat there and told us that our reserves were one point three million. It was in a public meeting here during a council meeting. That is not the number that is in this report.
I just don't know where she, there's a lot of reserves all throughout here. I mean, there's three reserves I'm looking at right here. Out of that two point two, five sixty-three, there's like an education reserve in there, a revenue sharing reserve is in there. You know, the problem is, and then again, I just don't know in what context. You know, she said reserves, but here's what I know. A lot of these reserves that you're looking on here, they were allocated in two thousand twenty-fives. I saw those late today.
Yes, so, okay.
We're, I, I'm up to date on twenty-five. So, that's why I say, we, you, you got, we need to take a hard look at your finances in the mirror and make some edits, but I just don't know, you know, what, uh, you know, under what context that was made. And I'm more than happy to understand. I just don't know. You've got reserves, but you also spent, spent, had to spend that again in twenty-five. So, and you didn't do that in twenty-six.
Ron, we're gonna let some of the public provide some questions. Bill, do you wanna come up and?
Yeah. Where is the eight million dollars? I was told the town is in debt eight million dollars. Is that true?
I don't know who told you that.
I don't know where that came from.
Okay, so you, but that would come from the rumor mill? And the ten, and the ten million dollars you could spend on the front, the roads of the town, to beautify Bucksport?
That's not true either.
That's not true.
No, it, I mean, what we're describing here is a project that we, the voters approved. It was a ten million dollar project, which the town is responsible for ten percent of that.
Okay, but that's not gonna happen, right?
We don't know.
You don't know?
I mean, the state's moving forward. That's why they're talking about engineers on the streets.
Okay.
It's happening.
But if, if they did it, Bill, that would be little, I think it's a little under nine hundred, something thousand, little under a million on Bucksport money. One million of state money.
Eight million.
Eight million of federal money.
Okay.
But we, I mean, as Ron is stating, we're not, there's no assurance that that's gonna happen at this point.
All right.
I just don't know about the eight million. I don't know where that's coming.
I don't know where that come from either. That's rumor, the rumor mill.
Yeah.
I can't dwell on rumor mills, man. I won't get anywhere. So.
I can sit back down.
Anyone else?
So here's what you did hear me say. Clue and do. You got money, okay? But what you got, time to take a look at it right now. Protect it, come up with a policy, you know, so that you, 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 you have limits, is the best way I can say it. That's, that's the beauty of the policy. You have limits. But you got money, you got money in other areas. As the, uh, non-general fund, I call it general, governmental services, uh, related. Look at it and I think it's probably time to reallocate some of those efforts for sure. And that's one of the things I told Jacob that we should be doing during this six thirty, twenty-five audit. Take a look in the mirror. What you look like four or five years ago, you don't look like today. So, you need to, you need, you need to do some housekeeping, for sure. So.
What, in your experience, what is the most common or best way to reshuffle a marina in under a different department?
I, I would ju- just do exactly that. We can run the math for you, you know, and it's gonna show up just like it would fire, rescue, police, all those departments there as well. Yeah. I, 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 I think it's just, it, it's, it's inevitable. So, it's just me being me. It's inevitable. So, I think it's there now. So. And when you make investments and you make investments, for lack of a better way, that are attached to something that looks like it could pay for itself, no way, no way.
Rich has a question.
Go ahead, Rich. I could see.
In twenty twenty-one, the marina borrowed a happy sum of money from the town with the fact that we were, cuz we were an independent department at that time. We weren't under the town umbrella. We weren't supposed to be getting money from the community. And we realized then that the town, that the marina was never gonna be able to pay that money back on a one percent note to the town. So, when we came back, what we did was asked to make it its own department. And that's what I was understanding, that since twenty twenty-two, the marina has been a department and no longer a solo entity.
It's still an enterprise account. It's not a, it's not a department of the town. It's, it's a, it's still essentially a business.
Correct, enterprise, proprietary fund in our governmental world.
Meaning that it's supposed to be funded by.
Itself.
User fees, itself.
So, the last update that we did with the brand new dock that we just built, the two hundred fifty thousand, that came out of waterfront reserves? That should not have happened. Is that what we're saying?
I don't know anything about that.
That, that would be in your twenty twenty-five report.
Yeah, so I, I, I just, I'm just not smart about that. I, I see some money for waterfront, but I'm just not smart enough to talk about the reserves for twenty-five.
But, but what I'm saying is, if it was still an enterprise, how should that money have been allocated then? Should that have just not happened until we got the fees from the users? Or is it still okay to borrow? I'm just trying to figure out.
Enterprise funds can have reserves, general fund can have fund, uh, reserves for enterprise funds, you know? But moral of the story is, you know, whatever your reserve funds are, detach them from your, from your marina in this case and, and let the marina stand as a, as a department of its general fund. So, cuz you're supporting it. And clearly, there, there you go. That's just a, just a, we can keep talking about this forever. I mean, ah, this, this is about as easy, you know, for me to just kinda understand a kinda support. That's something we probably oughta look like for, for budgeting purposes for twenty-seven. Yeah. And that's not gonna change. And that's the problem, you know? To dig out of that, sounds like forgive, forgiven loan and, you know, and just things like that. Yeah, no way. No way.
Can you, um, well, not to belabor the marina point, but unpack what, what the, what the projected saving it is to folding it into the town.
I don't think there is a projected savings. I just think they're putting in the town as the reality of that marina.
Is sort of, are paying.
They're paying for it now. They're paying for it now. They're cash flowing it for it right now. Think about it. The cash flow, you, you have a cash flow problem. You used two million dollars, okay? That put you in a cash flow problem. You used four hundred thousand dollars on your marina that was supposed to get paid back. That put you into a cash flow problem. All these things are adding up, you know, over the past few years, you know? And, uh, and that's why we're, we're, we're here. And twenty-four really kinda was the, look at me year. So. Twenty-five is gonna be the, okay, you've looked at me, now what are you gonna do year? And that's, that's really where I'm at right now.
There isn't a savings, but how it is funded would look different.
Lot, lot different, lot different.
Still have offsets from user fees, but it would be, there would be any difference would be funded.
Picture the same way, picture your same way as we were talking about the ambulance rescue. Same concept, same exact concept, same. Lot of times, rescue departments are special revenue funds or enterprise funds. So. And then, then you start to find out, well, the benefits aren't in there. Supply the share supplies with the fire department and things like that. Next thing you know, that, 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 that break even is two hundred thousand sideways, two hundred fifty thousand all sideways cuz other common costs aren't in there. So, that's why I say, if this, this is kinda masking that right now. And I would look at your marina just like your rescue department.
I don't know if you can speak to this, um, but on page nine, it, it says that for business-type activities. For business type activities, total expenses decreased by eighteen percent.
Yeah, well, that's your marina and your sewer department for sure, and that's your management discussion. That's so so I'm assuming you're in your M D N A. And that's your section, not mine, so we don't issue an opinion on that. I can just speak to it as much as you want me to. And that just tells me sewer expenses and marina expenses went down, you know, and the marina expenses went down. Because my memory serves me, you bought floats the year before or something else that made a significant investment, so. So there's 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 a big piece of that math right there.
And the sewer rate went up, and that doesn't offset from this budget, correct?
This or the next, it would be.
This one, one rate twenty-six?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause that was stagnant for a very long time.
I'll tell you, financially, you got a baseline to work with, and like I say, look. Just change your plan. Change. That's the message I bring. Good news, got the money. Got the money with the caveat, protect it, protect it.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, so with the marina, how far does it actually go in the hole for the year? Compared to what the town is spending on the marina compared to what it brings into money into the town?
Couple hundred thousand?
All depends, and that, like I said, that's 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 a tough question. Depends on the year. The year that you go buy three hundred thousand dollars worth of floats, you know, or the year that you do nothing. Which is usually ten to twenty thousand dollars deficit, so which year?
Twenty-four, was it seventy?
Seventy was in the whole seventy, but I think it was like ten or eleven for the year, so, like for the year. Like revenues over expenses. But again, the year before, it went to seventy in the hole, like forty the year before, just because of the investments that you were making the past two years. And some of the infrastructure out there.
Forty, seventy, ten so far, the last.
Last three years, yeah, last three years, yeah, yeah.
I had another question, too.
Go ahead.
How does it, how does the town figure, like, missing leasing equipment? How does that figure out money wise compared to buying the equipment and using it? Trade-in value, buying new police cruisers or leasing them? Is it a money savings for the town?
Well, it it's, we started doing that in.
It was last year.
Twenty.
Last year.
We were losing piles of money on the trade-in because we'd buy on a cruiser, for instance, was fifty-eight thousand dollars equipped. And then when it was done at the end of its life cycle, we'd be lucky to get twenty-five hundred to five grand out of it. It was terrible, but then for the lease, we got twice the product for half the money leasing for two cruisers was approximately twenty-six thousand.
And that's that's.
Cost effective.
It was very cost effective.
It was definitely a savings to the town.
Yeah, especially, yeah, huge on the operating side of things.
Leases are becoming bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a couple of other towns that are doing it, um, is it Bar Harbor?
Yeah, every that's where.
But it'll but it'll also depend on which municipality.
Yeah, and not comparing towns.
Some of the municipalities, it's just the opposite, so counties, you know, just the opposite with sheriff cruisers, so.
Now, did that work out as far as the municipal garage, their equipment they leased to?
We haven't started doing that yet, but it is something that we're discussing and looking into.
Okay.
Good question. I thought we did with some work trucks.
No, we talked about it, Luke, but we didn't. It wasn't funded.
Just to hit on that a little bit more on the trucks, it's best, the leasing for us with the trucks. On the, could be a very good move for us because when we buy some trucks in the past, we bought the cheapest. And we wound up with all those Max Forces that were junk. We literally paid at the time just over a hundred thousand dollars for those. And in today's money, you're lucky to get rid of those for anything over ten thousand is a gift, and if it runs. So if you lease them and it's junk, you just turn it in and get another one. So there's major investments we've made in the past that would be in our capital improvement line that sunk us. Cause we bought the wrong brand and we bought junk, not knowing that because they were new at the time. It takes a year or two to figure out that those are junk, so for us, the risk versus reward on the lease end. That's on that scale could prove out to be very helpful.
You can get out of a lease, can't get out of a bond.
Yeah.
How many police cruisers you leased out?
Right, two?
No.
No, we're not. I think he's at.
He said five, four or five.
Five.
Four or five.
And how many do we own? We.
We two, I think.
Yeah, you're you're you you lease more than you are.
Control one?
We do own that one, yeah.
We have one, we own with animal control.
Animal control. Deputy chief, deputy chief.
So we own three.
We own three.
And the canine.
So how many do we have?
We own four.
The canine's the least.
The canine's the least?
Canines least.
Okay, so we own three, and then lease.
We lease another four.
Four, so seven.
Seven.
How many police officers do we have in town now?
Eleven.
Full time?
Yes, I asked the I asked the police officer, have you you own, you have? She said eleven. Why do we need eleven? The town of Bucksport, Brewer only has twelve full-time police.
It's all a shift structure, honestly. If you wanna make it a safety thing, you have to have two officers on duty at all times. If you wanna make it safe. And in order to do that, you have to have enough cruisers for them each to be in. And a lot of the call volume that we experience here really doesn't have a lot to do with us in the town of Bucksport. Geographically, we're located between Bangor, Brewer, and Belfast. And I can personally tell you, as a police officer here for fourteen years, that a lot of our problems. That lined up at that Irving down there come from Bangor and Brewer, that aren't our problems that we wind up dealing with.
And you just absolutely hit the model on the head for the safety issue too, for sure. They actually add one of the people from New England come to speak at this town meeting exactly on that safety matter.
Two thirty, two thirty in the morning, I dealt with it alone.
Okay.
Plenty of times. I lasted fourteen years. My power meter got burned. You need two guys on twenty-four seven if you're gonna make it sustainable and safe without getting the town involved in a lawsuit.
Okay, and including the deputy chief, there's ten.
Yeah. And now that we have that structure, let me elaborate on this. Now that we have that structure, we're able to cut down on overtime. Because without that structure before, we were a training ground, and the last three years, we lost. Did we lose four or five police officers in the last three years? We're talking a three-year cycle.
Tell the municipalities, yeah, three years.
So in a three-year cycle, I think we lost five.
Four anyways, too.
So the money that we spent upfitting police officers, putting them through the academy and all these things. So they could go work other places that had the shift structure that we just developed. We now have a comparable, safe, sustainable shift structure that allows us to actually retain people instead of purging money out. Which is what we were doing, but we just adopted this just months ago. Adopted this new shift schedule and got us fully staffed. So it's gonna take a little bit of time before you see it, you're paid for it.
We had similar issues with fire, where we were losing firefighters because of our shifts.
Correct, and that will cut down on those because it'll cut down on overtime.
And the big issue that that where where really prevailed and why that police department is still there at that town? Safety issues citing exactly that, so. And it certainly helped when a police officer next door was in a brutal beating by himself. At a, I won't say it was a circle K, but certainly in a bad situation, so. Common sense, statistics, the gentleman coming up, throwing those statistics out, literally math and algorithms. You know, exciting exactly, you know, what Steve just said, um, best save that police department. And save that police, and people said, we we wanna be sa- wanna feel safer in our town, so, and we're willing to pay for it.
That's what it's gonna come down to is what the what people want versus what we're gonna pay for.
Yeah, and and also just to discern of the ten, how many are actually patrol? There's just a lot of factors to. To unpack in that.
It's probably eleven if you're including Axel, technically he's an officer, but.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any other questions of me? I look forward to seeing you guys again. Any follow-up? Here here we are, like I say, we're we're in twenty-five and we got good math for twenty-five too. So but that's why I'm saying it's easy for me to say here, time to change your plan, time to change your plan.
Appreciate your input.
Gonna give you a couple of, but I I just don't hold back, you know, what good is it gonna be if I'm not gonna hear and just like put it on the table? And 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 that said, I wouldn't be doing you any favors, but uh, but I'd like to give you a couple of fund balance policies. Start that conversation over the next few months because that's something you definitely wanna make yours, so, yeah.
In your experience, how many years has the maximum savings rate on a municipality only been stuck at five, only been at five percent?
I'd have to go back, and it's been a while. It's been a while, more than ten.
More than more than ten.
I'd say easily more than ten, yeah.
Is it reasonable to think that with the removal last year of the municipal levy, it's possible to increase that five percent?
When you say the municipal levy, you're talking like a like a like like L D one cap or, yeah, so, well, so a couple of these. I'd still say that there's an L D one cap, you know, that exists out there, just doesn't exist in law and on paper anymore. You know, but but that five percent, remember that overlay, that's designed for assessing errors, abatements, things like that. So that's why I always say that I'm not sure that rate's gonna change again because you're always gonna have that. And who's gonna experience the most? Oceanfront communities for sure. I'd argue with that five percent. You wanna talk about the state laws, hey, where are you at in a revaluation? I know that's a dirty word, the word of government, but where are you at right now? I know you had one a while ago, you know, but I'll tell you, you know, that that five percent, you better hope it's at least five percent. You better use every bit of it if you ever go through a revale, I can tell you that right now, especially in oceanfront community. So I look forward to coming back again, so I'll try to be as entertaining and as enthusiastic as I am tonight. But this town's in good shape. You got a lot of good things going on in this town. I, like I said, I just think it's hot reset, just reset, re- reset, rethink, you know, and and reallocate, really, so. That's it.
All right, thanks for your time.
Anytime.
Appreciate it.
Here's your door, a lot my laptops, I'm gonna throw this back in there too, okay? Take care.
Thank you.
Move more from the council or? I just, I really like the idea of getting them engaged with the financial algorithms. About the in November-ish, as we agreed to take a look at, um, Orland and Verona Island. The fire EMS and you know, that kind of stuff. I don't even know if we, maybe we should take a look at animal control with all the municipalities that we serve. And three counties now going on, you know, it's, uh. I I I just, when he starts talking financial algorithms, he really got my attention, you know, so.
I agree.
I think I don't, I I wanted to ask him how many years back, cause he he seemed very detail oriented. He knew what we're living with here in Bucksport, right down to the, I was really impressed with, uh.
Ron's been here since well into Roger Raymond, so he knows our stuff quite well.
What are the chances of, uh, our finance committee? We do finance committee as needed. What are the chances of scheduling a finance committee once a month and having an update to discuss where we're actually at? We have baselines now. What are the chances? So none of us are surprised by any of this. At any point in time, we have, um, either our first or second council meeting in the month is always a scheduled finance committee. So we can review where we're actually at and what's going on.
Preferably on the same day as council because if I end up stepping into economic development, it might be just.
Yeah, we usually do finance committee before council meeting.
Yep.
Is that gonna be okay with our finance director to do just a a monthly balance? I mean, I we get it for businesses and private stuff. Can we get up just to check in? That's how it used to be years years ago, that's how it was, and that went away for a little while, and I think now's probably a good time to get that up and running again. Yeah.
You want the first meeting?
Which I I honestly don't know, whichever you think. Sometimes, um. We s- we have different patterns. We set seasonally, things fluctuate a lot. What do you? I'm open to whatever we think is best. Probably the first meeting because we can talk about the previous month's numbers.
Correct.
That would probably be the most accurate.
Yep.
That'd be good.
How long of a meeting?
Half an hour?
Yeah, yeah, schedule it for a half hour for to start for a little while because we're gonna have some things to fine tune as we get rolling. Hopefully, a year from now, we can trim those down to just fifteen minutes, just for the just for the check in, but.
Yep. We can do that.
Give us a baseline.
Yeah.
And once we get settled, I think we could probably do it quarterly, once it's moved out.
Quarterly after, yeah, because that's sort of in sync with the books really, right?
Potentially.
Weekly reports.
Yeah, we'll.
We, monthly's fine.
We'll find out how unproductive those turn out to be after a while, see if it's a if it's a moot point or.
Yeah.
I think just having the numbers in front of us so that we're not surprised about anything.
Yeah, and it'll give the public another opportunity to come and engage with the finances. I hope a lot of people watched. I have no sense of people, but I think it was helpful to sort of dig into some of the questions. Because just to help the public understand sort of what's behind a lot of the things. To understand like the public safety is one that came up to me a lot in the community, and so asking questions just so public can understand it as well. And, um, the marina.
Yep. Anything else from the public?
Yes, why my taxes went up eighteen hundred dollars this year? I I got my tax bill and it went up to seven thousand one hundred and twenty-three dollars.
And I'm on the same, but mine, not thirty-six percent.
The largest contributing factor to that, which is what we've discussed throughout tonight. Is for the past ten years since the mill closed. The town has used a combination of fund balance and reserves to keep the mill rate low. To try and keep taxes low. They did that every year since the mill closed.
Okay.
This past year, last year, there was one point four million dollars. In both fund balance and reserves that was used to offset taxes. And as we've discussed tonight, we are no longer in a financial position to do that. And so what that did was created a one point four million dollar hole that was filled through taxation. So that's certainly there was, you know, there was, um, six percent, seven percent on the school. Fourteen percent on the county. Our expense budget went up five point nine percent. But sixty-six percent of the overall increase was a result of no longer being able to use those. That fund balance and reserves to offset taxes.
Okay, that won't be too bad.
All right, well, three years ago, they went up the same thing, thirty percent.
The increase three years ago was a result of when COVID happened, the housing market went nuts.
Right.
And we are required to value properties at a certain level. As to where the state expects us to be based on sales in Bucksport. And at that time, we had fallen, I can't even remember what we had fallen to.
My my valuation went up a hundred and eight percent that year.
We had fallen to sixty percent as to where the town, where the state said we should be. And so cost schedules were updated across the board back then to get us back in line to where the state said, um, that we should be. So that was the significant increase that happened three years ago.
Which was a hundred and eight percent for me, and then. The next year, they went, val- valuation stayed the same, but my taxes went up four percent. Next year, valuation went up twenty percent, which was this year. Which increased my, with the mill rate going up seventeen percent, that increased my taxes thirty-six percent this year. Well, that to me looks like the budget must have went up thirty-six percent.
No.
Part of that was.
I have to, I have to agree with what the.
I have to, I have to agree with what they're My new, my new tax bill is higher than yours, but what, what could me and I'm not saying we need an answer tonight, maybe think about this and I think the town council meeting that's coming up next, there is, they will probably see a couple more people here in the audience, but the thing that got me this year is the, their numbers are correct, um, the mill rate increased seventeen percent. And that was after going through a budget season where we took a chainsaw, a scalpel, everything. We, we saw in the eyes of the department heads what they went through and the beginning of the year started at eleven percent, looked like things were gonna be at and we got it down to just under six. That's just on the municipal side. This other two components, we're paying, as Jacob just said, town manager just said. The county went up over, we were paying them an additional forty thousand dollars over last. And the school budget that Jen and I, um, councilwoman Jen and I sat in on up there. That night, there was um there's eighty-five hundred people that live in the school district that night. Up at the Performing Arts Center, there were thirty people showed up in the room. And they reviewed twenty articles in thirty minutes and they spent twenty million dollars. Yeah, wow was right, you know, so, um but the thing I'm struggling with right now is two, three years ago, there was the mandate of the reevaluation by the state. And that's when our taxes went up considerably and now without warning and that's where I'm getting my emails from and my cell phone has lit up, without warning there were reevaluations that took place. My reevaluated number went up sixty-six thousand dollars. So in the end, my tax rate jumped thirty-three percent. And it's that reevaluation that who authorized that, that's what I'm struggling with and that's, that's the type of email. And I don't need an answer tonight, I think we need to maybe peel back the onion and see where that came from. And then, but anyway, that's the kind of email that I've been getting and not, not tonight to put it, but maybe by next week we can think through or maybe I'm, I'm, I'm out of, that's, that's the burr under my saddle that I've gotten. Others have reported to me. And I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you guys off, go ahead.
For anything, there's never, since I built it in like sixteen. There's never been anybody there, look, it's a one bedroom, one bath, twenty-eight by forty cabin with two walls. I don't have power, I live off grid. And they're saying the building is worth three hundred and twenty-five thousand now, when four years ago it was a hundred and twenty-nine? It just, how do they value when they don't even come look at something, don't even know what it is?
Sir, you, you will ha- you have the option, I think, to have your evaluation checked. And I would encourage you to call the town during business hours tomorrow and, and get connected to that pop, cause you.
They're not open Friday, right?
Uh, Monday, sorry, yes, Monday, cause they work four ten hour days, so they still work a forty hour week, but just Monday through Thursday. I would check in with the town on Monday, if that makes sense.
You wanna speak to the tax assessor?
Tuesday.
Tuesdays.
Tuesday, okay.
Can I give you something into that? Got a friend that lives on my street that had the tax assessor or appraiser or something come look at his house. And said the house is worth a certain amount of value on the tax bill. It jumped from like six hundred thousand to close to a million. This year's taxes went up five thousand dollars. And tax assessor or whoever, appraiser, whatever, they came and said, we're not taxing on what it's worth. We're taxing on what it would cost to rebuild it. Or sell it.
To sell it or rebuild it?
To rebuild it, no, he, he told me to sell it. It's based on real estate appraisal. And I don't, whatever, yeah, I was, I, she told me not to swear, but.
I've lived on Jacob's pond road for forty years and I've never had a tax person in, in my house. Never in forty years. I don't know if they come and walk around the house or not. If they did, they'd probably get bit by the dog.
Somebody told me that they go Google Earth and they look and they can assess a house from Google Earth.
Which I don't know either, but that's what I, somebody told me, that, you know, we can, especially on organized townships, the state does it to assess property, I don't know.
If you, if you reach out to the tax assessor on Tuesday, I think he could probably direct you to a, a way to sort of contest your current assessment with the assessor, not not necessarily, the town's not sort of doing the assessment, but there is an avenue for you to um, to look at that. And then perhaps the tax assessor could tell you what goes into a property valuation formula, I think that would be. Cause if I try and tell you, I'm probably gonna get it wrong. Yeah.
Yep, sounds good.
Jacob, I, I think, I think tonight's just a, a flavor of what we're going to be experiencing.
I thought tonight was the night, so.
I thought he was, yeah.
Well, let me, let me just interject a couple of things and just give you guys a blanket thought process, okay? Because everything that we're talking about tonight could have taken effect ten years ago. Instead of it taking an effect now.
Correct.
But the money that we've saved has held the line. And holding the line, our economic development and the town has tried very hard to get businesses to come here and help restore that forty-three percent tax base that we had. And we have had multiple businesses not do what they said they were gonna do.
Right.
And show up here to help us.
They were over in the town of Orland, in the school building.
I'm just, I'm not talking about that specifically, I'm talking about in general, multiple scenarios and examples. Since those are not there to contribute to our tax base, this is where we are at. And we no longer have the money to hold the line like we have in the past. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So that blanket thought process will help anything else that we have moving forward. We did very well. We tried to do business with people that didn't do what they said they were gonna do and that hurt us.
Right.
Which, one of my things was, I've talked to a bunch of people and their tax went up twenty percent, twenty-five percent, twenty-three percent. Mine went thirty-six percent.
Nobody's went up the same.
Yeah, it's like nobody's went the same, why would it be China? You know, everybody's value went up the same.
Correct me if I'm, Luke, can you go ahead?
So, I'm not the assessor, but I've worked with them quite a bit. So what I can tell you is that first of all, the last time we did an actual full value revale, Jeff Fitzgerald was the assessor. And he did visit every property.
Except for mine.
I guarantee you he visited, and I can prove it because the photos are on the server. He took photos of every property.
Outside.
Outside.
Never inside.
He had cards that he had, if he could see inside, it's not mandatory and a lot of people chose not to. Some chose to let him in. So in some cases, there's photos of the inside, in some cases, there's not. But there are photos on the computer server of every property on the outside from when he did that revale. That was, I'm gonna say six or seven years ago, does that sound about right? I don't know.
Yeah.
So, um, then when there's a new house built, I try and take photos and stuff so that if the assessor has questions about the outside, I have that. And then there's the building permits, they have the dimensions and that kinda stuff and hopefully floor plans if, if they're given to me. Um, so we try and get that as accurate as possible and we always tell people, if you don't think it's accurate check, you know, and also the reason we do demo permits and stuff is stuff's gone, you could still be getting taxed for something that's not there anymore. But when it came time for the reassessment, it wasn't a revale. So it's not the same as going out and visiting every property again. The goal of assessors typically is to try and do a revale every ten years. And it's a big job, it's not something you can do easily. Usually they have to have additional staff cause they have to visit every one of these properties and it's, it's a big thing. So what they do is they have what they call cost schedules. So every type of house has its own cost schedule, so if you have a ranch or a raised ranch or a cape or a colonial, they're all different cost schedules. And they use the real estate information that they get on, so maybe ranches are not selling for as much as capes are selling for right now. So a ranch might, value might not go up as much as a cape would because the cost schedules are based on what's going on in the real estate market. And then on top of the cost schedule, each one of your properties has grading in there, almost like back when you were in school. So your finishes, like on your friends, they're high end, really nice finishes, they're probably at an A. And most people are at, at what they have as average or C. And then if we, if we go out and we see a place that's really run down and in poor shape, we take it down as low as we can. There is a bottom and sometimes I've seen some places that are pretty bad and I'm like, can't we go any lower? Like the only way to get it lower is if they demo it, then we can take it off, but there's a bottom, that's as low as you can go. So we did those cost schedule, I say we, I, I helped with going around and helping her find some of the properties and stuff at the time, but we did the cost schedule things and we got it from sixty percent back to a hundred percent. And this year, the current assessor told me we were back down to eighty-three percent. So what happens is if you get down to a certain percentage, the state will stop giving us our cost sharing revenue at the same percentage as what we would get. So that's why the state says, you've gotta get your assessments up or we're gonna withhold that. The other thing they can do is they can decrease our homestead exemptions. So two years ago or three year, whenever it was that we did the sixty percent up to a hundred, we were gonna lose right now our homestead's twenty-five thousand, it was gonna go down to ten because if we didn't update our cost schedules. So again, I'm not the assessor and, and this is what I've learned from working with them, but those are some of the ways that they've done it. So this year again, he updated the cost schedules. But no, he did not go and visit the properties, nobody is claiming they did and we didn't do a revale. We updated the cost schedules to bring the types of houses and those grades up to where the real estate market says they're selling at. And again, if, if you think it's wrong, if you're, you know, if you think your house might be listed as a B as far as the interior finishes and stuff and you wanna show him that, hey, I just have pine bords and I don't have mahogany, then bring him in and show him and maybe that'll bring a town song if he changes the grade or, or whatnot, but. And also, you know, look at your tax card and make sure that if it says you've got three sheds and you only have one because you've got shed permits, but you never told me you got rid of the other ones? You know, you could be getting tax restructures you don't have. So there are some things like that, but I hope that gives you a little bit of an idea of how they did what they did. I can't, I don't know whose decision it was to say this year we're gonna bring them back up to a hundred percent, but I know we were down to eighty-three.
Well, and the truth is, re- real estate's doubled if not tripled in the past seven years.
It has, and, and I can say that, um, I'll, I'll just, I'll be honest with you, mine went up, mine went up forty percent. My taxes were forty-one hundred last year and they're fifty-seven fifty this year. My house is valued after my homestead exemption at three seventy-one. And I would not sell it for that. Now, I'm not saying everybody's in the same boat, but I wouldn't sell my house for less than four fifty to five hundred. Which is crazy to think about because I paid a hundred and thirty-eight thousand for it, but that's the market today.
That's really helpful, Luke, thank you.
And I think this is a major national issue too, that I do not agree with these evaluations nationwide. These houses are not worth what they're saying they're worth.
Right, I just have a ranch. We, we have a.
And I think that's the problem, like we, we have sort of the current debt for the houses we're living in.
Yeah.
We're not intending to sell because we love our town, but we could technically sell our houses for mint. Um, and that's, and we're sort of valued on that market, um, which is, we don't have control over that unfortunately.
Just to get you like me, think you own a house, well, it's five hundred and twenty dollars a month for taxes. Rent it off the town, basically, it's never gonna be mine. But okay, tax two years, you come take it.
Takes three years.
Three years or whatever, but I mean, it's like, when, a one bedroom, one bath house, your taxes are sixty-two hundred dollars a year, it's ridiculous. I think, but it would be, when they were thirty-two hundred four years ago, now they're sixty-two hundred.
I just think you should do what Lu- Luke suggested and come and talk to the tax assessor.
Sixty-nine four years ago and now the status was seventy-six.
Are you on water?
Oh, yeah, I would eat a pond, that's, yeah. Well, that I had to stay twenty-fifty feet away from to build.
I have a few mud ponds.
Yeah, you know, there you go.
Yeah, waterfront property.
Yes, waterfront.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Anyway, next week should be interesting, I guess.
Next week is the day, same, same place, same time, but different time. The, the regular meeting starts at seven on next, next Thursday night.
Next Thursday, yep.
It was a minister.
Alright, um, if everybody's okay, I think we're gonna take a.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Opposed? Motion passed.